Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our 30th meeting of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland. It is now 6:00 PM, and I call the meeting to order. Madam Clark, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Simmons?
Here.
President Clark?
Here.
Mayor Sidnor?
Here.
You have a quorum, Madam President. Thank you. Moving to agenda item number three, we have the approval of the minutes from our March 24, 2025, regular meeting and our April 2, 2025 work session. I'm not sure if everyone had the opportunity to take a look at those two. If there are no edits or objections, I will now entertain a motion for approval for the two sets of meeting minutes.
Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes for March 24 and April 2 as submitted by the clerk.
Thank you. I have a first from Councilmember Simmons. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Madam Clark, can you please? Call the roll? Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to agenda item number four, the report of the Mayor and City Council. This evening, we'll start with my colleague, Councilmember Cole.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. It's been three weeks since we've been here last. Quite a few Mondays, the way the calendar has gone. It's been a busy three weeks. On March 26, I attended the meet and mingle at the Historical Society. Also that evening, we attempted to hold an Environmental Affairs Committee meeting but did not have a quorum, so we could not conduct business. Our next meeting of the Environmental Affairs Committee is scheduled for May 8 at 6:00 PM. On April 5, I attended the Parks and Recreation Laurel Patuxent River Cleanup. Also on the 5, I attended the Arts Council and Laurel Patuxent Poetry Workshop. On the 6, I attended the Volunteer Fire Department Auxiliary Breakfast. On the 9, we held our Pride Committee Meeting. Again, we did not have a quorum, so we were not able to do business that night. This past Saturday, we had the April 12, we had the Extravaganza. Even though it was cold and wet, it's still a very quick event. Most of the children were out of there within 15 minutes. But there was a line, the longest line I've ever seen, going out of the lake house for pictures with the Easter Bunny. Some upcoming events, some that are very appropriate for this time of year. It's Earth Day next week. So this weekend, we have an Earth Day Cleanup by Parks and Recreation. Also, the Environmental Affairs Committee, we talked about advertising this. Please reshare this with everyone that you know in Laurel. This Saturday is the Department of Public Works Electronics and Used Paint Recycling Day. So electronics are free, but used paint cans can be recycled for $5 each. They do not have to be dry. Upcoming meetings, on April 23, the Pride Committee will be meeting at 6:00 PM, hopefully with a quorum. And Sunday, April 27, Pride Day Planning Committee will be hosting a fundraiser at 11:00 AM at NewsBacks. Some legislation I've been working on. This past three weeks, I worked on reviewing our public safety tax credit. There's some updates that we can do to that. I'll be getting with the mayor on that and then hopefully submitting that to the council for a future agenda. With that, Madam President, it concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Next, we have Councilmember Adrian Simmons.
Thank you, Madam President. To share, actually, just before the meeting, I broke away from the office here and taxis into Walk Down to Riverfront Park, just off Main Street for a little mental health break, and it was looking clean and green. So thank you to Parks and Rec, the residents who came out, and to Councilmember Cole for being out there a couple of weekends ago. And just encourage folks to continue to get outdoors. It's been pretty, and to enjoy the green spaces we have around town. It was a pleasure to be a part of the March 27 Enough Grant Presentation at the Laurel Multi-Service Center, both for what's hoped to be a first step for our city, being able to serve children in poverty in the Laurel area, as well as to be able to connect with the Maryland Secretary Montero, who's for the Secretary of Service and Civic Innovation. One of the things I had an opportunity to talk to him about is the Governor's Maryland Core Program for kids and also for adults who want to take sort of a year of service. So if you know anybody out there who's sort of graduating from high school, isn't quite sure what direction they want to go, application is now open for that Maryland Core Program. You can check it out from my website, AdrianforLaurel.org. Just do a search for Maryland Core. And I think it's a really neat program that the governor instituted a couple of years back. A tip to share that I sort of recently learned of, maybe others were already familiar with, at the west end of Main Street, there was a building that got turned into a parking lot probably a decade ago. In my mind, it was stuck as a pay parking lot because that's what it was originally. But I learned that it's actually a free parking lot now, that we've made the decision as a city to make it without having to put money in the meter, even if you do see a meter there. So I say that because it's right next to a number of businesses like Olive on Main, the Laurel Mo Playhouse, Cork Bottle, Pretty Pups Pet Care, and even Gigi's Ice Cream. So know that if you want to get to Main Street to sort of frequent those businesses, please take advantage of that parking lot. It's a good time of year to get some ice cream, too. So go out and visit them. Speaking of sort of spring/summer, lots of great things coming up. If you're like me, sometimes you might accidentally let one slip by, like the Main Street Festival, or you know, the Kids Bike Parade, or even the Extravaganza that happened this past weekend. So I did put a list together, both of city and sort of non-city events on my site, just with some spring/summer dates. So this is time to get out those pens, get to your calendar, and mark them down, so you can be sure not to miss those. Speaking of which, May 10 is the Main Street Festival, so get that one down. But part of the reason I say that is for your group to be in the parade, tomorrow is the registration deadline. So it's always a lot of fun to see all the different groups and communities we have around town sort of showcased in the Main Street Festival Parade. So you know, go to the Laurel Board of Trades website, fill out that form to get your group in the parade. And it's a lot of fun to be a part of that, so encourage you. Lastly, just two notable items that will be coming before council for everybody out there, just to have a heads up on. One, the Board of Elections met sort of this past week or the week prior. And so we expect here, within the next couple of weeks, to have the revisions to the elections laws back before council. I know it's been a couple of months since we last saw those. So a heads up that those are coming back, as well as May is budget month here in the city, so that will be showing up. So just a heads up for residents tracking with us to keep your eyes open. Alright, thanks very much, and back to you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Next, we have Councilwoman Christine Johnson.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My report for this evening is as follows. On April 5, I was able to attend the Strong Readers Prince George's Literacy Call to Action Summit. This was a meeting with public schools, families, nonprofits, faith-based organizations, businesses, libraries, elected officials, basically anyone interested in helping Prince George's County children. The goal is to have them rank among Maryland's top 10 counties in reading within the next five years. So they are looking to select a limited number of community pilot programs by the end of May, and then launch those programs in the fall of 2025. So I did sign up for more information, and hopefully Laurel can be a partner in this. So look for more information as they flesh out what that looks like and how we can partner with them as a city. I wanted to acknowledge, in addition to via email responses, the receipt of letters from concerned citizens regarding the funding of the Laurel Independent, they received those, and all of those will be taken into consideration. Like Councilmember Cole mentioned, DPW is having an electronics event, a meeting that we're having on April 23, 6:00 PM. The Committee for People with Disabilities and Senior Citizens will meet via Zoom. Hopefully, we can get a quorum as we're getting new members and people interested in the committee. Hopefully, we can be able to contact, conduct business during that time. Also, on April 26, there will be the Casting with the Cops, so feel free to go out and have a good time with the cops catching some fish. And lastly, in partnership with Y's on the Court Solutions and a local student athlete consultant, the city is hosting three free student athlete workshops. They're going to be held throughout the day. 10:00 AM for girls ages 7 to 16, 12:00 PM for boys ages 7 to 12, and 2:00 PM for boys ages 13 to 16. Again, it is a free event, but registration is required, so we can plan accordingly, and volunteers are needed to assist with that via the city's social media information. And that concludes my report.
Now, inside Laurel and outside Laurel, but it all coincided with Laurel. So on, first of all, I'd like to say glad to see you doing good, Madam President. I see the soup help, alright? And I want to send my respect and deepest condolence to the Grant family. Robert Grant, I'm gonna go backwards. On April 13 was the Celebration of Life for Robert Grant at the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department. I made that. And going to March. So March 26, I attended, I've been having job fairs. I'm trying to have job fairs throughout Maryland. So first on the toys, the job fair was at the Baltimore City Community College. That was in partnership with 92Q Radio Station up there. Speaking of job fairs, we will be having a job fair at the Multi-Service Center on June 7. That's coming up, June 7, Job Fair at the Multi-Service Center. That's gonna be for the city of Laurel, right here at the Multi-Service Center, Craig A. Mo Multi-Service Center. March 27, I was at Y's High School for anything but college fair. So I was there helping out and assisting with that, trying to, I got a group of students that were interested in trucking. So I had them come out and practice. You know, they wanted to learn about trucking, so I gave them an opportunity, a free opportunity to learn a trade. Anything other than college fair. April 2, District 1 Town Hall meeting was at BAPS off of the Ammondale Road in Belleville. That was hosted by Tom DiNoga, and that was a lot of things. The Acting County Exec Tara Jackson gave a budget analysis on Prince George's County, so I wanted to know more on what was going to affect us. So I have information on that if anybody's interested. April 7, I was in a virtual meeting with the ownership of XTT Life. This is a product that is, they're targeting for fleet vehicles to reduce on fuel and money as well. So that was April 7. April 9 was June 10 Committee Meeting. And on that same day, I attended the Prince George's County Muslim Society. This was a dinner, which was, and the guest speaker was Brooke Learman. Sorry for chopping the name up. She came and gave an analysis on the controllers. A lot of people don't know that the controller, they work with, this I didn't know as a business owner, that they work with you, you know, when it comes to paying taxes and looking for funding and finances, all of that. So I have a website, or you can just go to the controller website and get information on that if you're a business owner or looking to become a business owner. April 11, I was, now, this was the best. Career, College and Career Day at Oakland Elementary School. I was able to speak. Oh, I had a great time.
Councilmember Mills, I think you're on mute.
Sorry about that.
You're fine.
Councilman Mills was at Oakland Elementary School. Spoke to five different classes and came up with a mayor. I have five mayors, and I have five council members, and they learnt our jobs, so we're in trouble, y'all. So I'm just letting you know. I had a great time there. And then April 12 was at the Multi-Service Center, where we had a Black maternal health event. Now, don't look at me funny when I say maternal health event, because I'm done. But I went there and got some information, and there was some great information from the ladies that spoke. There was a panel, and much respect to those ladies that came out and gave their stories. They almost make you cry. But they were strong, they gave their stories. The mayor was there, Councilwoman Johnson was there, and I mean, yeah, this is something that I think we need to do, you know, definitely on a constant basis, because the information that they gave for Black women is so important. You know, so important. So that was a great event, and thank you, Mayor, for putting that on. Also, on that day, the Board of Education meeting greet. Oh, that was with Dr. Tiffany Adorffel, who is the District 1 Board of Education rep. And that was at the Belleville Library, and she came and gave a lot of information on the schools within our, in the district. A lot of the schools that Laurel children go to were on these lists, and these lists weren't good. So my suggestion is that we need to invite her out to the city of Laurel and have a meet and greet. She brought representatives from Capital Improvement, and she brought the Transportation Director. These are people that we need to talk to as parents, alright? And on that same day, April 12, I was able to get out there and catch everybody on that soggy ground, Councilmember Cole's. Oh, boy. But they still, it was a lot of people out there for that Easter egg extravaganza at the lake. But that was a great event. Children was happy, and that's all that matters to me. April 13, oh, and that was the Celebration of Life for Robert Grant at the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department. That is my report, Madam President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. For my report this evening, it will be brief. To start, I've been out sick, as you can hear from my voice. And it's important that I don't want to give it to anyone else. So that is why you have not seen me, because no one else needs to be sick with me. So just getting my voice back, a huge thank you to my colleague, Council Pro Temp Mills, for covering and leading the March 24 Council Meeting. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, sir. In regards to that as well, I attended a couple of events prior to getting sick with a few of my council members. But I have seen, during that time, I have been in bed and able to see all the things that are going on in the city a little bit more. So we are aware regarding the car thefts and the vandalism that has been taking place. I did see that the lights went out. BGE fixed that, which Chief Hammer will also talk later about regarding the car thefts and vandalism. Also, I've seen the many emails that have come in. Thank you for communicating with us in regards to your recommendations for the Laurel Independent. They have been received, as Councilwoman Johnson referenced as well. So thank you for communicating that with us. We love to hear from you. Also, some residents have reached out to me directly regarding the loss of federal jobs. They've indicated that a lot of their households have two incomes that rely on the federal positions. I have taken the time while in bed to help people to find jobs. But as a reminder, there will be a spring job fair that Congressman Glenn Ivey is hosting. That will actually be this Thursday, April 17, from noon to 6:00 PM. It will be located at the Showplace Arena in Upper Marlboro. He has indicated that this is for all job seekers, including federal workers as well, to help displaced federal workers, and also there will be employers there from around the region. So please tell other people and share this with others. And thank you as well for Congressman Glenn Ivey hosting this. They hosted one previously. But it's really important for us to be able to support our federal workers during this time right now. And we have a lot of federal workers. We're very close to the base, and we have a lot of people that, as you know, Laurel is a great place to live, in between Baltimore, close to BWI, but very close to DC and affordable. So a lot of people do live here, and they travel into the DC area for their jobs. I will cut it short tonight, so that concludes my report. Mayor Sidnor, please feel free.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Madam President. I really appreciate it. Start my report in order. On March 26, I attended a Maryland Black Male Monthly Meeting. March 27, I want to thank Acting Director Michelle LeBlanc and her assistant, Ms. Price, for hosting the Enough Grant Launch Program. It was an important program. As we know, we want to address child poverty and any other insufficiency we have inside our city of Laurel. So they apply for their grant, and they're gonna try to apply for a bigger grant next year of over $300,000, so they can get that grant as well. On March 30, I attended the Kingdomship Fellowship Church, and I gave me a tour there, Multi-Service Center, with a state of the art. You get a chance to go by there. It's really just the same version as our Multi-Service Center, but just more fancy. But you know, but it still serves the same purpose. It helps those individuals in need, with food, insecurities, clothing, job placement, and things of that nature as well. March 31, I had a tour of St. Mary's Elementary School. That was the first time I attended a school with the children, and welcomed me there. And I talked to a lot of students there as well. So thank you, St. Mary, for allowing me to come to your school and visit your young scholars. April 1, I was invited to be the guest speaker. Wow, can't believe that. At the 38th Annual National African-American Postal League United for Asses Convention. And that's pretty much started 38 years ago, when African-Americans working in United States Postal Service and Leadership, and they had their annual conference every year, and headed in Maryland this year, and they invited me to come out there to do welcome remarks and welcome to Laurel. So that was pretty interesting. April 7, I attended Montpel Elementary School Pre-K. Wow, I can't believe that. Pre-K was working on dinosaur stuff like that. I was impressed to see Pre-K, I thought I learned about dinosaurs by in the fourth grade, I believe. I can't remember, though. But the Pre-K learning about dinosaurs at the early, I was very impressed with the teachers there at Montpel Elementary School, getting our scholars early start. April 9, the Hope House Grand Opening, reopening. Hope House been on Main Street for several years, and they closed, and now they opened back up. I believe I said it, the 14th of the day, the 14th, they're supposed to have clients there that stay overnight. That would probably be trying to bus back to Crownsville, but they'd be there on Hope Street. And then those intense outpatient treatment will be going to intensive outpatient treatment at the Multi-Service Center eventually. I don't know when that process is gonna be going on, but intensive outpatient treatment is when you go six to nine hours a week going to group therapy, and residential treatment, of course, you stay there overnight. So Hope House is back open on Main Street. Also, Metropolitan Washington Council Government Monthly Meeting, and we did talk about the federal government, the layoffs have here. The President of Chamber Commerce was there, and he said that Prince George's County, we had like 40,000 government employees and about 800. I've got the number of contractors, but it will have a big impact on Prince George's County. And like Councilmember Clark said, we have job fairs going on throughout the city and in the district with Commerce Glenn Ivey. And the city of Laurel is open, you know, we have jobs all the time, but I don't know if it's enough money. Some of those individuals might lose their federal government job. But you know, we're aware of that, and we're gonna be working on things to try to help those individuals as well. April 10, we had another event with the Council State Delegation with Northern Virginia elected officials. Also, with their, of course, the General Assembly for Northern Virginia, along with Prince George's County, Washington DC, and Southern Maryland. We got together for a reception, and once again, talk about things affecting the region, you know. So everyone is talking, and the council government, we meet once a month to continue to find ways, to find our ways in case of fallout of federal government work, how we can help our citizens in our region, and how we can also employ them as well. April 11, I attended Oakland Elementary School, another Career Day, spoke to the kids, their fifth grade class. I want to thank the Communication Department. They've been very busy lately with a lot of the events, Black Maternal Health. The event was scheduled this past Saturday, and just Black women are three times more likely to die during their pregnancy than any other race. So that's important that, you know, the Black women get the care when they're delivering their babies. So we're gonna highlight that. One thanks to Deja Smalley. She was the organizer of that. She has an organization called Steer Born Law and Empathy that she coordinated for us. We've been partnering with her for the past several years. And so it was a great turnout there, a great educational ceremony, not ceremony, but event, to keep people aware. April 13, I attended the funeral of Robert Pop Grant for the respect of the city. We like to flag his half-mass out there. City flag half-mass. Announcements, some announcements probably made already. But April 19, Earth Day, between 10:00 AM and 11:00 AM, Granville Gooey Park, so please come out and support that if you can. Also, April 19, it's Fair Housing Month. Director Burrows, his shop, has been putting a great program together.
Yep, that works perfectly. Thank you. Um, so for, um, as Mayor Sidnor said, he's requesting for the, uh, mayoral appointment for Rosette Latson for the C A C for Senior Residents and Persons with Disabilities with a term starting April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five through April fourteenth, twenty twenty-seven. Um, do I have a motion from the council to approve the appointment mentioned?
Madam President, I'll move to approve the mayor's appointment.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. We have a first, Madam Clerk. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills as second. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
So Nicole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Sidnor, would you like to proceed?
Yes, uh, Chief Hamel, can you come on and give us an update on some things that happened this weekend? We appreciate it.
Yes, uh, good evening, Council President Clark, Mayor Sidnor and the, and the, uh, city council. Thank you for having me on this evening. So, uh, Council President Clark and Mayor Sidnor asked me to speak about some concern within the community regarding motor vehicle related crimes. So the good news is over the past about fifteen months, we've been trending downward. Even though this past weekend wasn't the best weekend within the community, um, we saw an uptick in, in some of these related crimes. But year to date and over the past, as I mentioned, fifteen, sixteen months, we've been going down. Um, but let's talk real quick and I'm, I promise I'll be quick. I can, I know the council members were worried. So, um, uh, let's just talk real quickly about what you guys can do in the community to help us combat these trends. First off, secure your valuables in your car. And I know you've seen some of these on our social media posts, but not everybody gets social media. So let's just go over a couple of things to help out. Secure your valuables in your car rather than leave them in your car, especially overnight. Park in well-lit areas when you're parking in the evening. Or when you leave it, double check, triple check that you've locked that car. A lot of times people swear they've locked the car and we find things stolen out of it. And nothing's broken. The windows aren't broken. This has been no forced entry. So what that tells us is they probably left it unlocked by accident. Also activates your alarm system when you walk away from your car. If you have to act, actually activate it, make sure you activate that. Um, also a reminder that the Laurel Police Department has a number of anti-theft devices for certain vehicles available through our Community Engagement Section. You can please contact the police department, speak to Sergeant Vuskovich and he'll make arrangements to see, uh, what we have that may be able to help you out. Um, this one is very important. Um, you know, we all have that sixth sense. I would ask everybody, please pay attention to your surroundings. Please pay attention to what's going on in your home, your neighbors' homes, your community and our community at large. And immediately report all suspicious activity to our communication center. That way we can send our officers out there quickly in order to, to the area of concern, in order to address the matter. I promise you, our officers will do legal, moral, ethical, constitutional policing. They'll address the matter correctly. Sometimes what it is, is person's perfectly fine, then they're on their way. But we do get people that contact us and say, you know, I woke up this morning and I found out five of my neighbor's cars got broken into. And two o'clock this morning, I saw a guy hanging outside my neighbor's car. Then good to have that at two o'clock in the morning. So you're not gonna bother us. This is what we're here for. This is what we have a very dedicated, uh, rank and file police department for. Please, please report that. Also, look out for each other. What I just said, but really do pay attention for your neighbor. If you know your neighbor's away and all of a sudden you see, you think somebody's is on their porch, somebody's inside, report it. If you know your neighbor's away and you see their car's been moved, report it. Again, it doesn't hurt anything to report it. We'll take care of it right. And then lastly, I'd ask you, if you want us to come out and speak to your community about this or any other issues you may be having that you may be concerned about, just contact, you can contact me, contact our Community Engagement Section. And we'll make sure we get the right people out there to speak to you about your concern and answer your questions. Council President Clark, Mayor Sidnor, thank you guys for letting me have this time. I know it's unusual for us to do this in this setting. So I really appreciate it and thank you for your all's concern.
Thank you, Chief Hamel. We really appreciate, um, you sharing that. I know that a lot of people have questions and you know, our city does a really good job of trying to, I think, of communicating with our residents and trying to give them tips that are helpful. So thank you so much for speaking on that. We really appreciate it. I know I asked you this afternoon, but thank you again. Councilmember Mills, I think I saw your hand up.
Yes. Uh, I, um, had a question if that was okay.
Sure. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Chief. All right, so I, um, I, I was just wanted to know, uh, because since we was talking about, you know, car theft. Um, so a concerned citizen wanted me to show you this here. I don't know if y'all can see that. Uh, so the window, the, so the window is broken. And this is over in the over, in the overlooked community. And, um, so, um, one of my, one of my, uh, one of my friends, we were at the restaurant down in Bowie. And, and these people, they literally, this was at nighttime, literally went down the row of cars. Busting the windows on the driver's side and to go into the cars and like S U Vs. Um, they don't go, they don't lift up the, the back, you know, of the, of the, um, of the trunk on the S U Vs. What they did was they, they went through the backseat in the S U Vs. So a lot of times people think that they, you know, putting their valuables in the trunk. They, they still go, they go through the backseat. They, they go, they went through the glove part, glove compartment, backseat and then, and, and through the backseat into the trunk. Um, I wanted to ask this question because my, my, um, my goal is for the city of Laurel is to, you know, to create a dome of protection a- around within the city. And, um, you, I remember you was mentioning about the funding that, uh, pays for certain things like the streetlight cameras, uh, the rail light cameras. It, would that, is that something that can be paid like doorbell cameras and cameras on homes? Or even putting cameras in the neighborhoods or something like that? Is that something that can be paid by that?
There's a variety of things that could be done in that regard. I'm not so sure budget wise or uh, legal wise, if we could pay for people's personal cameras at their homes. We have a registry. It's online. We got a pretty robust amount of people in the city of Laurel registering with us. So for instance, we had the homicide two weeks ago. We were able to go to people's homes, go to those cameras in, in order to, to look into the matter. Um, I'm proud to say, as many of you know, we had an arrest in that case on Friday. Um, so i- i- there's, there's a, a wide scope of, of concerns there. And, um, that Michelle might have to answer some of those regarding funding and proper utilization of the resources we have. You know, if it's grant wise, we've got to be very careful and make sure we meet all the numerics on the grant, make sure everything's okay. Um, with the, so, uh, Mr. Mills, a lot of this is low hanging fruit. And I say that meaning, somebody will leave their computer sitting on the front seat of their car. And we're not victim blaming, uh, everybody, we've all done this. We've all left our phones sitting there because we're running in somewhere and running out and you're like, oh my gosh, I left. But, um, my, my prior life, I had a, a team of officers follow two guys. They tried a hundred cars in a row through a neighborhood, but they didn't break any windows. If the car was unlocked, they went in and took what was ever in there. If it was locked, they just went to the next car. It, it, I can't over emphasize about hardening the target here. Where you move those valuables. And that doesn't mean put them in the back of your S U V. It means take them inside with you. You're safer that way with it. Park in a well-lit area. If you needed, if your driveway's, uh, uh, not lit enough. Um, get those motion detector cameras, get those extra floodlights, uh, motion detector lights. Get those extra floodlights up around your house. You help your neighbors and you help yourself that way. Somebody comes walking in, you can have your, your, uh, lights set up to trigger an alarm to your phone. Depending what system you have and you'll know somebody's out there. Now, look, you're also gonna get alert on deers and cat and like, but you'll know something's out there and you can, you can go out and check. But, uh, thank you for your questions, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again.
Another question by Joyce.
No, I think I, I don't see the hand anymore. So thank you so much. Um, so we're gonna move on to agenda item number seven. We have, I'm sorry, agenda item number six. Our general public hearing. Uh, this is a time that we want to hear from you, our community members. Your voice matters and we value your input. We encourage you to share your thoughts, your concerns and your ideas with us as they are essential to shaping our work and our city's future. Madam Clerk, can you please confirm if anyone has signed up for the general public hearing portion?
I don't have anyone signed up, Madam President.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no speakers signing up today, I will open the general public hearing portion at six thirty, eight P M and close the general public hearing portion at six thirty, eight P M. Moving to agenda item number seven. We have a bid recommendation for Cypress Street and Saratoga Avenue improvements. Acting Director Tommy Helms, you now have the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sidnor, Council President, Council President Clark and Laurel City Council Members. Uh, the Department of Public Works is requesting approval to award the contract for Cypress Street and Saratoga Improvement Project, L A twenty-five double O seven. The scope includes resurfacing the existing pavement, replacing sections of curb and gutter, sidewalk, ADA compliant ramps and installing new thermoplastic roadway markings. Westbound Cypress Street from West Smith Drive, short of Oxford Drive and the entire length of Saratoga Avenue from Concord Avenue to Colony Avenue. The Department of Public Works has listed public bids for this project resulting in nine submissions. A bid opening was conducted on March fourth, twenty twenty-five in the council chambers. The submitted bids ranked from lowest to highest are as follows. Calvert Ready Mix and Concrete Supplies LLC, ninety thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty cents. B M P Construction Company, Inc., one hundred and one thousand, nine hundred sixty-one dollars. Stanley Concrete LLC, one hundred three thousand, nine hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty cents. E and R Services, one hundred ten dollars, nine hundred thirteen dollars and forty cents. Espina Paving, Inc., one hundred twelve thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars. Image Asphalt Maintenance Incorporated, one hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars. S F M S LLC, one hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. Ross Contracting, Inc., one hundred thirty-five thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars. Francis O'Day Company, Inc., one hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars. Funding for this project is available through the F Y twenty-five Adopted Capital Improvement Program. Cypress Street and Saratoga Avenue Improvements. It is recommended that Calvert Ready Mix and Concrete Supplies LLC from Lesby, Maryland undertake the Cypress Street and Saratoga Avenue project in the amount of ninety thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty cents. In addition, D P W is requesting a contingency amount of nine thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and sixty cents to account for any unforeseen construction issues that may arise during the project for a total of one hundred thousand dollars. Thank you. And now I am open for any questions.
Thank you, Director Helms. Do any of the council members have a question or a comment regarding this bid recommendation? All right, I don't see any. So with no additional questions or comments, I will now entertain a motion for this bid recommendation. Everyone don't jump in at once or I'm gonna jump in.
Madam President, I, uh, I move that we award the bid to the Calvert Ready Mix, um, in the amount of the one hundred thousand as recommended by the department.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. We have you as a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole for seconding that motion. Uh, can you please call the roll, Madam Clerk? Thank you.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you, Director Helms, for that explanation. Okay, well, go right ahead. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item number eight. We have a bid recommendation regarding the generator replacement project, Phase One Design uh, by the Department of Emergency Management. We have Director Christina Cornwell. You now have the floor.
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor and Council Members. The Department of Emergency Management is requesting approval for one hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred forty two hu- I'm sorry, one hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars in funding to begin Phase One of the generator replacement project. The critical facilities slated for generator replacement include the municipal center, police department, public works complex, parks and recreation maintenance facility and the armory. Phase one will involve conducting surveys to determine the appropriate specs for each generator, design development and securing any necessary permits for installation. The city has an existing agreement with the Maryland Environmental Services which favors subject matter experts to support mitigation projects such as this. Their team will develop a detailed engineering and electrical design to facilitate Phase One. Funding for this project has been allocated under fiscal year twenty-five capital improvement programs. I respectfully request the council's approval to proceed with Phase One in collaboration with the Maryland Environmental Services. And I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Director Cornwell. Are there any questions or additional comments from the council? Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Uh, yes, just to share with folks who might be with us, we, we recapped this back on the April second work session, but um, I think it's important for, for residents to know too that this, um, project is covered under a grant for which the city is really just out of pocket about ten percent. So although we're approving the hundred fifty-two thousand, the city's piece of that's gonna be more like fifteen to twenty thousand, just depending on some of the final numbers for this phase. So, um, to let, let folks know about that bit. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. I see Councilwoman Johnson also has her hand raised as well. Please proceed.
Yes, since I had a quick question, I guess I just noticed, um, this is Phase One. So do you have an idea of how many total phases there will be?
Be two phases. Uh, once we get complete Phase One, we would have to go back and submit the information, uh, from the surveys, uh, to FEMA to get Phase Two funding. So the lump sum has been approved for the whole project. They just wanted us to do it in phases and that's how we would get the funding to continue them. So just two phases.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Are there any additional questions or comments regarding this bid recommendation? I don't see any. So I will now entertain a motion for this bid recommendation.
Madam President, I move that we approve the bid recommendation as presented.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Cornwell. We appreciate it. Okay, moving to agenda item number nine. Resolution number four dash two zero two five. We have a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to set the date, time and polling location for early voting in the city of Laurel for the general election of November twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, Sarah Green, you now have the floor.
You, Madam President, uh, resolution number four dash twenty twenty-five, um, is the required resolution uh, of the Mayor and City Council to set the, uh, time, date and locations for early voting for the upcoming, uh, twenty twenty-five general election. Uh, which will be a council member, um, only, uh, election. Um, the date is scheduled for Saturday, November first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, and we again will have two polling locations, um, for early voting as well as Election Day. Uh, Ward one is held at the, uh, Joseph R. Rabisson, um, Laurel Municipal Center. And Ward two is the Robert J. De Pietro Community Center. Um, and also, um, the time for the, the, um, early voting will be nine A M to five P M that the polls will be open. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions from the council or comments? Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Yeah, just a quick, uh, clarification for the record. I, I think the clerk may have accidentally said November first, but it's November fourth, um, which is, is the way it is in the resolution. Um, but just if anybody was listening.
Voting is on November, Saturday, November first. General election is Tuesday, November fourth. So this is
I'm reading the wrong paragraph. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Simmons, do we have any additional questions or comments from the council? All right, seeing that there are no additional questions, I will now open, since this is the introduction and first public hearing for this resolution number four dash two zero two five, I will now open the public hearing on this item at six forty-eight P M. Madam Clerk, can you please confirm if we have anyone signed up to speak regarding, uh, agenda item number nine?
No one signed up, Madam President.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no speakers, uh, we'll close the public hearing portion at six forty-eight P M. This will, if there are no objections, this will be moved for a second public hearing at our next meeting. Um, thank you. For agenda item number ten, we have the introduction and first public hearing on resolution number five dash two zero two five, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Laurel, Maryland to pay tribute to the Emancipation Day. Um, I shared this at the work session. Um, this is something that I wanted to sponsor. Um, and this, just to give you clarification, this will not replace, um, our Saint Mark's United Methodist Church event and celebration that has been in existence for more than a hundred years. But this is something that will support that. Um, this is a local recognition that will show that our city values this history and its identity and heritage, and that it's not just a state observance. Um, it also provides Laurel the opportunity that we can highlight our city's unique historical connection as I shared regarding Saint Mark's Methodist United Church, I'm sorry, United Methodist Church, um, regarding emancipation and the contributions of the formerly enslaved people connected directly to Laurel. Uh, lastly, it also sends a powerful message about our values towards equality, freedom, and promoting inclusive civic and identity and increasing our community bonds with our local residents while acknowledging some difficult historic truths. So I am here if you have any questions or any further comments, um, regarding the council. Everyone's very quiet. All right. Well, not seeing any questions, um, I will now, uh, open, I'm sorry, not seeing any questions from the council. I will now open the public hearing at six fifty P M regarding this agenda item number ten. Madam Clerk, can you please confirm if anyone has signed up to speak on agenda item number ten?
No one signed up, Madam President.
Thank you. Well, with no one signed up to speak, I will close the general portion at six fifty P M, and this item will be, um, moved to our next meeting for a second public hearing if there are no concerns or questions. All right, thank you. Moving to agenda item number eleven, we have a request from Mayor Keith R. Sidnor regarding the mayoral appointment of Chrissy Cornwell, Director or Director of Department of Emergency Management. Mayor Sidnor, you now have the floor.
Uh, thank you again, Madam President. As you know, that we need a child amendment to create Department of Emergency Management and also create Department of Human Services, and each department has its own director. And, uh, Chrissy Cornwell has experienced expertise in emergency management. Um, she'll submit the resume. She have a twenty years' experience working in emergency management. Uh, been a great job for the city of Laurel. She's been working for us, and I appreciate the confirmation of the city council to appoint Chrissy Cornwell as the Director of the Emergency Management Department.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, um, do I have a motion to approve this mayoral appointment for Chrissy Cornwell as Director of Department of Emergency Management?
Madam President, I move to, uh, confirm the appointment of Chrissy Cornwell to Director of Department of Emergency Management.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole and Councilmember Mills. Madam Clerk, we have a first from Councilmember Cole and a second from Councilmember Mills. Can you please call the roll?
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you and congratulations, Director Cornwell. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I'd like to thank the support of the, uh, mayor and council members. And I look forward to continuing to grow our emergency management department and programs, um, with our Assistant Director Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Sidnor, would you like to say anything as well?
Um, no, you guys did a great job. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving to agenda item number twelve, we have an additional request from Mayor Sidnor regarding a mayoral appointment for Michelle LeBlanc as Director of Depart- of the Department of Human Services. Mayor Sidnor, you also have the floor for this.
Uh, thank you again. Like I said earlier in my first statement about the creative department, um, Department of Human Services, uh, Ms. LeBlanc has over twenty years' experience working in human services. As you can see by her resume, she also has a master's degree in human services, and I think her expertise would fit right with the Craig A. Multi Service Center, with our transitional housing, and all our, our nonprofit organizations coordinated out there. So that's why we wanted to create these two departments, separate them, put the expertise in each matter in each department. So I appreciate, uh, council, uh, uh, con- confirmation with Michelle LeBlanc as the Director of the Human Service Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing no questions or comments, I would like to request a motion for this mayoral appointment.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve Michelle LeBlanc as the Director of Department of Human Services.
And seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilwoman Christine Johnson and a second from Councilmember Adrian Simmons. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Motion carry, or President Clark, I'm sorry.
No problem. Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you and congratulations to Director LeBlanc. Would you like to say a few words as well? I see you're off mute, but for some reason we can't hear you. Okay, you're welcome. We, we understood that. No worries. Congratulations to both of you. Thank you. Okay, well, that actually concludes
I want to thank the council again.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mayor Sidnor.
Thank you, Council. I really appreciate your confirmation for these two appointments. Um, thank you. You did a great job. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, and thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Well, that concludes our agenda items for this evening. If you're not aware, spring, I think, is officially here now. I would say yes, since my allergies are all over the place. Um, but this is a good time for you to go out. As Councilmember Simmons said, there's ice cream, there's Main Street, there's Laurel, the Laurel Park where you can get exercise. We have all of our restaurants that people love, so don't stay in the house. Go out, spend with our local businesses and our local community, and we hope to see you at our next meeting. Thank you for confirming, Madam Clerk, on the twenty eighth. Uh, with no further business to come before the mayor and the city council, this meeting is now adjourned at six fifty-six P M. Have a great evening.